There was still some good traffic.
I missed it, I missed it then.
Good evening, like to call the city council meeting of July 28, 2009 to order please. Roll call.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Mayor Vice Mayor Ruane.
Here. And the city clerk will lead us in the pledge please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a couple of announcements this evening. First of all, the regularly scheduled city council meeting of August 11, 2009 is canceled. And we have a beautification task force invites residents to nominate properties for 2009, the annual beautification awards. Nomination forms are available at the city clerk's office or on the city's website. Irene, do you have any comments there?
No, we've been getting quite a few nominations in, so I'm very excited about the whole process. And if people see businesses, don't forget businesses, yourself, your neighbors, all of those people, anyone is eligible for this award. And also, we're looking for people to send us pictures of their summer. And we're doing a program called Summer in the City, Summer in the City with a Heart. It's a new title, we're working on it. But we're going to be presenting the pictures on cable and on the, before the Friday night movies that the Art and Culture Commission does on Friday nights in September. So they'll be shown several places. So if you have some fun thing you did in the city during the summer, we'd like to have those. Thank you.
Thank you. We'd also like to thank the San Bruno Garden Club for the floral arrangement they provide for our meetings. Presentations, we do have a presentation of a proclamation tonight for National Night Out in San Bruno, Tuesday, August the 4th, 2009. I'll read it. "National Night Out in San Bruno, Tuesday, August 4th, 2009. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch on August 4th, 2009, will sponsor its annual National Night Out, a nationwide crime, drug abuse, and violence prevention program. And whereas the San Bruno Citizens Crime Prevention Committee plays a vital role in assisting the San Bruno Police Department through joint crime prevention efforts in San Bruno, including the promotion and coordination of the Neighborhood Watch Program in San Bruno. And whereas the San Bruno Citizens Crime Prevention Committee joins the National Association of Town Watch in supporting the National Night Out. And whereas the San Bruno Citizens Crime Prevention Committee is encouraging all San Bruno residents to participate in National Night Out by turning on their porch lights on August 4th, 2009, between the hours of 7:00 PM and 10:00 PM as a symbol of support for crime prevention. And whereas the San Bruno Police Department in conjunction with the San Bruno Citizens Crime Prevention Committee will be hosting an open house during National Night Out to share crime prevention strategies with the community. And whereas the San Bruno Police Department and the San Bruno Citizens Crime Prevention Committee is encouraging all San Bruno residents to meet their neighbors on August 4th, 2009, and talk about ways of improving their neighborhoods by forming a Neighborhood Watch group on their block. Now therefore, I, Larry Franzella, this is signed by the mayor, the city of San Bruno, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 4th, 2009, National Night Out in San Bruno and urge all residents of San Bruno to join the Citizens Crime Prevention Committee and the National Association of Town Watch in supporting the 2009 '26 Annual National Night Out." And I would like to present this to Mr. Robert Regal.
Vice Mayor Ruane and council members and citizens, the San Bruno Crime Prevention Committee again thanks you for recognizing National Night Out, recognizing the part that your citizens, Crime Prevention Committee along with the Police Department plays in helping to promote more eyes and ears and citizen involvement. So we thank you again. Just Tuesday, August 4th, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, we will be holding our get-together at the San Bruno Police Department. I communicated with the mayor earlier, he said he will be there to speak and offer some guidance and obviously be able to answer questions. The chief of police will be there. We will have a small presentation on National Night Out as a program, more importantly, all about Neighborhood Watch. And the Target store in Tanforan is helping support that evening. And Target nationally is one of the big cosponsors. So if you find that you would like to come to the Police Department and interact on a one-to-one, that would be the place to do it. If for some reason you can't, try and turn on your porch lights, go out and meet your neighbors, because it's neighbors knowing neighbors is the ground, the bottom line on where you can start getting involved and doing your little part. So thank you again for the proclamation and maybe we'll see some of you Tuesday the 4th.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item five, review of the agenda. Anybody have any items they want to talk about? There is one item that has come up that requires our immediate attention and probably will require a special closed session this evening. I'd like the city manager to explain that.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council. As you've just indicated, there is an item that came to our attention just this morning. It pertains to a matter of potential litigation and therefore is properly the subject of a closed session discussion. There are two findings that you need to make, and I will just articulate them to you now. And then you need, if it is your pleasure, to approve the holding of this closed session. You need to do so by a majority vote of those of you who are present typically. There's a higher standard, you need to meet in making this type of action. But for tonight's purposes, that represents three of the four of you would need to vote affirmatively in order to make this happen. The threshold for your decision is your ability to confirm the following. One, that the item arose after the agenda was posted. That is correct, in this case, as the item came to our attention just this morning. And secondly, you need to be able to verify that the item requires your immediate attention. And in this case, the item is timely. It's important that we speak to you prior to your next city council meeting, which is now scheduled for August 25th. So with those findings, I would ask your concurrence to schedule a closed session.
All right. The first item is this arose after the agenda was posted.
Do you want us to move that?
Move to have the special meeting.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Post. Okay, and this requires our immediate attention?
Actually, there's no need to make separate action on the findings. It just requires one action on the part of the council to take this action.
Okay, so we will have a closed session after the meeting is over. Very good. Approval of the minutes, any corrections, errors, omissions? Seeing none, the minutes will be approved. Consent calendar, all items are considered routine or implement in earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested by a council member, citizen, or staff.
If there's no comments, move to approve the consent counter.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearings, notices have been published, posted, and mailed, we have no public hearings tonight. Item number nine, public comment of items not on the agenda. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agenda as pursuant to state law. Any member in the public wish to speak to us this evening? Okay, item 10, conduct of business. First item is, A, adopt resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with JJR Construction Incorporated for the concrete repair project in the amount of $193,645 and approving a construction budget in the amount of $242,100. Staff, please.
Good evening. The purpose of this contract is to perform during this '09-'010 budget year, all of the needed concrete repair, replacement, or installation work. Those type of projects will include the sidewalks. This will be our second year in the sidewalk repair program. Will be our intent to follow up with you, with a proposal establishing and recommending and then seeking your approval, establishing priorities for the next phase of the sidewalk repair program. It is our intent to take our recommendation to the subcommittee in the next three, four weeks and then to come back to full council with those recommendations from the subcommittee. Just as a additional information for you, last year, as part of the first year of this sidewalk program, the residents of the city really took advantage of the offer of the city to use our contractor for their sidewalk repair. And 31 of the residents took advantage of our program and basically made repair to the sidewalk in front of their property. Also, any curb and gutter repair during this next year, this will include also the accessible curb ramps, our ADA program, which is a different CIP project in our this year's CIP budget. To propose priorities for this program, also will be part of our recommendation for the next phase of sidewalk program. The department already made some, actually three prior commitment for ADA ramp installation. And this is on Cherry, that additional, that additional crosswalk was implemented without the ADA. This will be one of the first item which the department will ask the contractor to perform. Also, on Sneed was a crosswalk installed without the ADA. And also, our commitment was to install the ADA ramps on San Bruno and downtown area. Those are already prior commitment made for ADA ramps. But will be our intent to come back to you with the recommendation, how to prioritize the ADA and also the sidewalk repair program. Probably will be part of our recommendation to focus on pedestrian emphasis area as the next phase for this sidewalk implementation program, repair program. But certainly will be our intent to have those discussions with you and to give you the opportunity to make the policy decision on that matter. Also, will be our intent to use this contract for small project implementation, how is our traffic calming program, CIP program for this year, and also for utility repairs. When water or sewer makes any major repair work, the concrete, the sidewalk, and the curb and gutter need to be replaced. And this contract will be used for them to schedule those repair and to perform those repairs. As you see, the bid was opened on July of this year, I am going in the wrong direction, and four contractors made proposal to our request. And the price was very advantageous for the city. This is very good environment for any agency work to be done, that the proposals are very good from a price point of view. The city will be able to do more work than how initially was our intent. As you see, the engineering estimate for this work was $270,000. And what I am requesting you today to authorize the city manager to sign the contract for a contract amount of $193,000 plus a 25 percent contingency, which will increase our construction budget to $242,000. The funding for this contract will come from many different sources, how I indicated before discussing the scope of the project. Is our expectation that the residents will use this year also this opportunity and to have, to replace the damaged sidewalk in front of their property. Our estimation is that this will be again around $30,000. Measure A is $110,000, which mainly includes those traffic calming project and also certain portion of our rehabilitate, surface rehabilitation project. Redevelopment Fund is for the same reason, for ADA and also for our sidewalk program. Stonewater Fund is, that is included also for one of our CIP Stonewater Project. And wastewater and water, those are included in our operation budget for concrete repair work needed for operation. The total funding is, how I indicated before, $242,000. If you have any question.
Any questions of staff?
Through the chair. The one question I had looking at the budget was the contingency of 25 percent, which seems rather large. And why is it so high for this proposal?
Our intent here will depend on your approval, how much, based on our discussion. Will be a very long list, like for the sidewalk repair. Will be very long, long list of needed repair citywide. And will depend on the agreed priority, how far the city want to go down on that list. And adding this contingency give us more flexibility, how much the city and the department will be able to ask the contractor to do and to perform based on your direction on the priorities, knowing that this is a very, very good proposal and the cost is very low.
Follow-up, what would be the normal contingency that we might see? So we're seeing 25 percent now. Is it 10, 15? What's the norm?
Probably 15 percent would be a more, more usual. But this really is not a lonesome contract that basically you, I don't know, probably is known 40 percent exactly today, but exactly project this contractor will perform. The remaining 60 percent, and this is just an estimated percentage on my part, will depend on further refinement of the program. And really will be up to us, curve to draw the line, how much they will, how much work they will do.
Through the chair.
Councilmember Rivera.
I think I understand what's going on here, is that the bid, the bid process was based on quantities, so not necessarily projects.
Correct.
So we, the city gave them quantities of how much, you know, you would do this. And so what came back was based on unit costs.
Correct.
Certain lengths of, you know, amounts of driveway apron and curb and cutter, curb and gutters. So my question is, and it's sort of similar to my colleague, is if there was budgeted for two, if there was an estimate of $270,000, why don't we just put that on the table and say, you know, work with it, based on your unit cost? I understand, I mean, I think it's great that we've, that they came in almost, you know, $80,000 below the estimate. And by all means, I know I can speak for myself in that subcommittee, is that we're way behind in replacing stuff. So if the money's there, if the money's accounted for, why are we now still even going $30,000 less than, you know, that we were prepared to pay? I mean, I don't know how many, I mean, putting out how many, how many more sidewalk flags that you can, how many more handicap ramps you can do with $30,000, so.
Councilmember Rivera, your comment is absolutely logical and your question is, well, is obvious, is very appropriate. That could have been done, the intent was here to really try to define also to a certain degree. Even if you see that how the contract, the proposal came back that basically $9 per square foot.
Right, right.
And last year was 11. That really mean that even if the proposal came back per square foot, was some kind of description and limitation how this contract would work. Was included in our specification that will be a minimum guarantee and also will be given to them in chunks, in phases, that you are not just calling them up each day, that I want to do here this project, that will be in two, in five different phases, giving them enough work in one time, defining a certain work area, how they can be more efficient and cost efficient for themselves also. And that's the reason why our estimate was higher and for the same kind of quantity of work, they proposed this price. That was our intent, just to stick to our initial plan. But that doesn't mean that this cannot be increased and basically spend all of the $270,000. And based on our priority and policy discussion on the sidewalk program, will be your desire to increase that dollar to 270, 70. Certainly will be our intent to verify with our legal department if any legal concern about increasing over 25 percent the initial cost, what kind of implication that will have on the bid procedure itself. That typically increasing the contract amount can create some challenges, that not all of the bidders had the same level of knowledge.
I think it's a good, I think it's a good approach, because you're basically hiring us, you're basically signing on for a service agreement. And so in coordination, as the year goes on, you can call upon them to do certain areas. So, well, good luck on that.
Any other questions concerned, action by the city council?
I'll introduce the resolution, please.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rivera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item B, adopt a resolution approving a citywide records retention schedule authorizing destruction of certain city records and rescinding all previous records retention resolutions. Staff.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. So this evening, we're requesting that the city council adopt a new records, a retention program. And I have to say it's the pleasure of both myself and the city clerk, who has worked on this quite a bit, to present this program. And while records retention might not seem the most exciting topic, I have to tell you, it is really, really an important thing to do, for two reasons. One is that this records retention program will put us in compliance with the requirements of the government code, which has a statutory scheme that sets forth when public records may be destroyed, or how long they need to be retained when they may be destroyed and under what conditions. So this would bring us into compliance with that. We do have an existing policy, but it was very difficult to use, and therefore, records have been retained much longer than perhaps they need to be. Which brings me to the second reason it's important to have a good records retention policy and program. And that is for the efficiency of the organization. It's good government and it's part of best manage, best practices. What a records retention program, when it is well done, can do for a city in terms of its efficiency, is it can help you really better know what records you have, make it easier and more efficient for staff to identify and locate records. It will make it easier for the public, excuse me, for the public to access records under Public Records Act requests, and for employees to identify, locate, and provide those documents. And it also reduces costs, because when you're retaining documents for long periods of time that perhaps are duplicates or are unnecessary for the organization to maintain beyond a certain point, that we're just paying huge storage costs to keep them for no real reason. And that takes away from efficiency and increases our costs. The way that the policy was developed, what was in consultation with a records expert, there was great coordination among the departments. And our directive from the city manager was to ensure that the policy did a couple of things. But most importantly, that it be internally consistent and that we exercise care to not destroy records unnecessarily, to make sure that they were retained for the minimum period that is required, not only under the government code, but for the efficient operations of our government. And lastly, we wanted it to be really understandable and easy to follow, which the last records retention program, the reason it was not used was because it wasn't created in consultation with all of the staff members and was not easy to follow. One example of it, if I can, if I can, if you can bear with me on this, if you look in the packet at the retention policy, and I'm looking at the very last page, and this is the one I'm probably most familiar with, it, just to give you an example, it's how the policy applies to my department, the city attorney's office. So for example, claims, which, you know, we receive government claims alleging, you know, various issues for which the city could be potentially liable, this is on about the, I think about the fourth line. You would want to keep the claims, of course, until there's a final resolution. And so what we have here is that we would keep the claims for, until final resolution plus five years. And then pursuant to different government code instructions, there are certain documents that can be converted into different formats. We've indicated here what formats they can legally be converted into and destroy the paper document. And also the different government code or other applicable statutes that might need to be consulted before a record is destroyed. And the way the record would be destroyed is pursuant to the minimum statutory period or, excuse me, policy period, there would still need to be the approval and consent of both the department, of the department head, the city clerk, and the city attorney. So that's the way we've organized the program. What your resolution would do, if you authorized it this evening, is it would adopt this new policy, it would rescind the old policy, it would allow documents to be retained and destroyed along the lines that have indicated, and it also provides the authority to the city manager in consultation with the department head, city clerk, and city manager to make adjustments as we go along in this program to the retention period. At this time, does the city council have any questions for me?
Questions of the city attorney.
Through the chair. Couple of questions. So obviously, there's various methods in which the information will be stored, and then of course, the hard copy will be destroyed. So let's say we're doing document imaging as one method. Is there any system or anyone that is going through to do spot checks to verify that the imagery is actually legible and clear, so that there's a checks and balance to it, so we don't destroy it all of a sudden, go to retrieve it and all of a sudden, it just didn't work? go to retrieve it, and all of a sudden, it just didn't work that way, some papers got stuck together, and it went through the system?
Well, that should be an operational requirement, because as you've said, it makes no sense to try to retain a document in another form if, if it's not being retained that way, if you can't read it, if it's not accessible to you, so that should be an operational requirement.
So there would be some type of a checks and balance to that?
I mean, I'm going to assume that the many, the city manager is going to require that before something be allowed to be converted into a different format.
What I mean by that, if there's a hundred papers, you take ten percent of it, and then maybe you spot check to ensure some clarity, that's what I'm referring to.
You raise a really good point, because not all formats are, it's not necessarily always a good idea to convert something to a different format because of those issues and because of changes in technology, so sometimes it's actually better just to keep the paper, until the end of the retention period.
Okay, and I know that it probably has been sometime, maybe since City Hall moved to Bay Hill, since the records have been gone through in boxes, and I obviously know we have an abundance, and I remember doing microfiche imaging when I was, for the city, when I worked for the city, and so it goes back a long way, and I know that that is outdated technology, and as you said, it does change. One of my other questions was on the resolution under section three. It makes reference that with the consent of the department head, city clerk, manager, and attorney updates to the retention periods are hereby authorized to be made in the records retention schedules without any further action by the council of the city of San Bruno. So why would the council not want to be updated, or have any type of an input if necessary in regards to modifications or changes to that?
You could certainly retain the authority to do it, and the question is, do you really want this to come to City Council for making minor modifications to retention schedules? As I indicated, as we go along using it, we may find that there are some changes that may be necessitated. So it's really just a question for you, whether you want to retain all of that authority, or whether you think it's appropriate for the city manager in consult, in consultation to consent with those forenamed department heads, and the city clerk, and the city manager, excuse me, city attorney?
I mean, it was just set up, it was just set up here, maybe if it's to modify them to have state statutes or requirements, but here, to me, it leaves it open to the discretion of these folks to modify it, which could be different than the state statute technically, or you're saying we can't supersede that, so in essence, it can be no shorter than, only it can be longer than.
Correct, correct. It cannot be shorter than the statutory requirements, so.
Is there anything that falls under here that's non-statutory? That for the city of the municipal, the city that we're doing here, that we're making determinations?
I'm sorry?
So there's certain state requirements for a lot of stuff. Is there items in here that are not under the state statute for destruction?
Only whether, when there's a question of interpretation as to, you know, not every single type of document is listed under the government code, so one of the problems, for example, with our last policy, was it wasn't necessarily clear what it fell under. So we've made a decision about what category that falls under, and therefore, the, the minimum requirement for that document. I hope that.
It does, and it just brings me back to the point, I understand the state statute, and that dictates to us, so it is what it is. But when we start having gray areas, I don't know if that is something that should not, at times, come back for council review, just so that the, the council is aware of what is being destroyed and on what timeline. That's just my commentary.
And certainly retain that authority, and it's, I mean, it's not a problem for the staff.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
To the chair. I'm, I'm all in favor of organizing and saving significant amount of money.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt your question.
I'm all in favor of getting organized, but it's my understanding that there are departments, that there is just so much, so many files that are backed up and everything, and they're actually stored in various parts of the city. Is, is that going to make a, take a significant impact, are we going to be able to eliminate?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, your question actually goes to what's next, which is, the next phases of the program are twofold. One is a free the files day, where we actually set a day when, where in advance of that, the departments need to go through and identify the records that really are overdue for this kind of examination and determination of what should be done with them, retain them under the policy, or destroy them. So that's the next phase, and beyond that, we need to deal with our electronic documents, our e-documents, so that will also be coming to you. And then just to go back, actually, to Councilmember Medina's question, in, you asked whether our policy differed at all, I think, from state statute, and the one thing I wanted to be clear about is in some cases, we've elected to have a longer period, certainly not less than what the state requires, but we were more conservative in our approach to a number of documents, to ensure that they were available to the institution, you know, going forward. So I just wanted to clarify that.
And community development has gotten somewhat of a head start on this, too, right?
I know that my assistant is very organized, and she has the boxes, you know, ready to go, that identify documents and files, and it's waiting on this, really, this moment to be able to either retain some, or have them permanently destroyed, because they're, they're not relevant anymore.
Any other questions or action by the council?
I'm just going to go back to the section three, that I would like to see that modified to, we don't need to see things that are state mandated, I don't want to overwhelm us, but things that don't fall under that jurisdiction, I would like to see, I'm recommending that those items come back to the council, if they're modifying, destroying records.
So it would be anything that, because I need to modify the resolution, anything that, can you say that again for me, so I get it right?
If it just doesn't, if it falls outside of the state statute. So obviously, the state is probably dictating, what, seventy-five, eighty percent of this, or more?
Anything where there's a gray area, or whether, or some proposal.
Not if we're exceeding it, that's okay, not if we're meeting it, that's okay, but there's areas that you said that we're making a determination within the city, that doesn't fall under the state statute.
Oh, what I was saying was making a determination as to what category certain records fall under, and then based on that category, you know, it could be two years, five years, ten years, that's where our last policy really wasn't clear, it just listed all this stuff, and then it left it open to interpretation as to which minimum standard applied, and now that's been clarified. So I'm sorry if I didn't answer that very well previously.
Action.
So, through the chair.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Medina, after hearing that information, are you still requesting that the resolution be changed, so that any changes in document retention that are outside the state purview come back to us?
Yes.
Okay. May I have clarification? This has gone through department heads, and you, and the city clerk, and it's the city manager, and it's reflected, it reflects what the state demands?
It does, but there is no harm in it coming back to the City Council as we work through it, if there are any changes.
I just want to be clear what, what it is that comes back to us.
That's fair.
Not, not so much which document goes where, but if, if somebody in the department suddenly says, well, I only want this for two years, and not the five years, or those kinds of things, is that what you're asking for?
You're correct.
Okay, that's fine with me, too.
Thank you for clarifying.
So, for my purposes, if you do amend this, it would just be easier that if we make any changes to the retention policy, it comes back to you, that way it won't be subject to interpretation as to whether it should or should not have, but.
Probably, you know, in the next five years, probably, nothing will happen anyway, so.
That's correct.
Okay, no, I'm just, I just want to make sure we are all.
Thank you.
Okay, so you're introducing the resolution?
I'll go ahead and introduce the resolution with that modification to section three of the ordinance.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibarra.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Item C, adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute first addendum to agreement between the county of San Mateo and the city of San Bruno to toll statutes of limitations for claims regarding property tax administration fees.
Thank you. So really, the purpose of the resolution authorizing the execution of a first addendum goes back to an important directive that the City Council has given to staff previously, and that is to really make sure that we attempt to recover any possible dollar that we might be able to recover, and do everything we can to protect city funds. So while this is really not involving huge amounts of money, it is part of that continued effort. The background to this is that, as the council well knows, the county assesses and collects property taxes on behalf of all the cities in the county, and in doing that, it's authorized to charge an administrative cost, which is the, I always mix this up, but I think it's the property tax administrative fee, or PTAF, I'll just call it the fee, with a shorthand during our discussion. So, you know, that's operated well for a number of years, but in, in the two thousand three, two thousand four timeframe, as you know, the state enacted these different programs, the triple flip, the VLF, and there are complicated machinations as to they were, as to how those work, I won't try to describe this evening, but basically, those come down to the state taking money from the cities, and finding some complicated way of reimbursing the city. Basically, they take different funds and put them aside, potentially for recovery by the city, so they're put into special accounts. Now, in doing that, the state said that the counties should be reimbursed for that extra work, for the increased administrative costs for those activities. But what's at issue, and what's happened, is that the cities have been charged more than what we think is really the cost of implementation of those programs, and they're being collected in the same manner as property taxes, and so that increases the fee greatly. So the legal question that is being addressed right now is, are the counties really charging too much, are they charging more than is appropriate? To the city of San Bruno, this makes a difference. In two thousand three and thereabouts, and maybe our finance, finance director could speak more specifically to this, it's my understanding that the city was charged somewhere between fifteen and thirty thousand, I need to correct a statement in my, my report, because now the fee is closer to eighty thousand dollars a year, so there is a, a big difference to us. Now, the way that we're handling this is because the, the answer to my question about, are they charging too much, that is a legal question that is being addressed through various litigation in the state, and the answer to that question is not yet clear. So rather than have the city of San Bruno be compelled to either make a choice to sue, and expend those resources, or to give up those costs, we've taken a different route, and this is what we did. Based on City Council authorization, we filed, as is required, a claim with the county for the amounts that we think we should be reimbursed. And then the county denied those claims, which would give us a certain timeframe by which we would have had to sue, except that we were able to enter into, it's called a tolling agreement, which means that everything just stays the same until we all reach a point where we no longer want to participate in the tolling agreement. And that point would come when we have more clarity as to the outcome of the legal cases that are proceeding through the court system. In other words, we need an answer to our question, did they charge too much? So at that point, we'd be positioned to decide how to proceed. In doing this, the city has, our city has joined fifteen other cities, neighboring jurisdictions in this county, and, and some beyond, to, where we have joint legal representation, so that we can share the costs among all of these different cities, and therefore, the amount that San Bruno is bearing is quite small, to the tune in the last fiscal year of about twenty-six hundred dollars. So what the addendum would do, that we are asking you to authorize this evening, is just to add on to that tolling agreement, the most, the amounts involved in the most recent fiscal year, so it just keeps you current. So at this time, does the City Council have any questions for me?
Any questions? Action.
Move to adopt the resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibarra.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Item D, adopt resolution amending the two thousand nine, ten capital improvement program budget and authorizing the city manager to execute purchase orders for the commercial data and voice services project in the amount of one million, six hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Tenzin.
Honorable Vice Mayor, and members of the City Council, good evening. The item before you is the approval of an amendment to the capital improvements program budget, forming a new commercial data and voice services project, and authorizing the city manager to execute purchase orders for telecommunications equipment in the amount of one million, six hundred and nine thousand dollars. As articulated during the budget study session presentation, and subsequently in the cable rate review presentation, staff is before you this evening to present its recommendation to expand the services offered by San Bruno Cable to include commercial data and voice services. As you are aware, the various capital investments made into the cable enterprise over the last decade has culminated in a deficit in the cable television fund. These capital investments began ten years ago, with an investment of seven million dollars for rebuilding the system to a seven hundred and fifty megahertz fiber-rich infrastructure, followed by smaller subsequent investments to roll, to roll out digital cable, high-speed internet, high-definition television, video on demand, digital video recorders, digital phone, simulcast, the set-top box deployment, the DAC conversion, and most recently, the conversion to an all-digital system, resulting in the reclamation of plant capacity for further expansion of products and services. These strategic and timely investments into the cable enterprise has advanced the city's mission to remain a value-oriented service provider, and has strengthened San Bruno Cable's position to combat market competition. A decade ago, cable companies enjoyed a majority share of the video market, however, since that time, a significant amount of market share has been lost to competing satellite service companies. While cable companies were dealing with land-based analog infrastructure, the satellite companies were utilizing direct-to-home satellite-delivered digital technologies to offer consumers more choice in channels. As a result, cable companies across the country, without exception, experienced significant subscriber losses, losses. In San Bruno's case, twenty percent of customers switched to satellite service. To address this loss in subscribers, the cable companies leveraged their cable infrastructure to offer services that satellite companies could not, and then launched a marketing campaign that bundled service offerings, bundled services offering customers the convenience of one bill, and coupled with significant cost savings. This new strategy was effective in creating traction with customers, and enabled companies to create revenue growth and, and profitability, and improve profitability. From a community benefit perspective, it was great to see competition, as citizens had more choice for their video service. But from a business perspective, this loss in subscribers had to be addressed to ensure San Bruno Cable's continued ability to meet its mission to offer services the communities, the community desired, and the value-oriented pricing it enjoyed. So at the direction of City Council, San Bruno Cable also pursued the industry's diversification and bundling strategy, and as seen by the industry, San Bruno Cable's revenue has increased from nearly five million dollars ten years ago, to over ten million dollars today. San Bruno Cable's revenue from operations have generally fully covered both operating and capital expenditures, except that the fast-changing technology and market demands over the, at the recent past have required capital investments that have exceeded income, resulting in this moderate amount of debt or deficit. Had the city not pursued such action, there might not be a deficit, but then subscriber losses would have been greater without digital cable, internet, high-definition, video on demand, et cetera, and the cable rates would have been significantly raised to maintain the revenue base and cover the ever-increasing cost of programming. The benefits of these investments are that San Bruno Cable is still a thriving municipal cable operation, where citizens are enjoying a comprehensive suite of broadband services at a great price. San Bruno Cable is highly successful today, but the competitive landscape continues to change. Technology continues to advance, and there is an opportunity for San Bruno Cable to serve a broader segment of our community by initiating high-quality internet and telephone service to business customers. Since the City Council's interest is to preserve San Bruno Cable's mission to continue being the primary choice for cable service with low rates, then further action is necessary now, before the impact of, of any new competition is felt. When there's choice in the market, consumers switch, it's just the nature of the business, but how a business responds to these changes will determine its success or failure. There may be a window of one to two years of time before AT&amp;T, AT&amp;T's U-verse, and possibly other services become widely available in San Bruno. The time is best utilized by further diversifying services to include commercial data and voice services to serve the needs of San Bruno's business community. In these tough economic times, every business is looking to increase productivity and reduce costs. The same high-quality, low-cost service enjoyed by residents can be extended to meet the needs of the business community. However, in order to tap into this new opportunity, a capital investment in telecomm- However, in order to tap into this new opportunity, a capital investment in telecommunications equipment is required. Staff, after having worked on this project for ten months with a variety of vendors and experts, selected Cisco Systems, the only local, state-of-California-qualified vendor who is able to fully satisfy the design and technology requirements to provide a comprehensive solution for the development, for the deployment of commercial services. A variety of routers and switches and IP telephony equipment have been identified for purchase as outlined in your staff report. This selected, these selected items are commercial-grade and have useful lives of ten-plus years, and can support many data customers and up to seventeen hundred telephone sets. These pieces of equipment are, for the most part, replacing aging or lower-grade existing equipment, so that a higher-quality, highly-reliable, commercial-grade service can be delivered. Even if the city council does not, does not adopt this project this evening, these equipment replacements will be required separately, either this year or over the next two to three years. As an example, the city's legacy Mitel telephone system is slated for replacement starting this year and requires a general fund investment of one hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. If San Bruno Cable is directed to launch commercial services, this general fund investment will not be required. The city would subscribe to San Bruno Cable telephone service and enjoy the benefits of not only a new IP-based phone system, but the benefits of paying itself in the process. One piece of equipment that is not replacing existing, existing gear is a new transport switch. This switch will be utilized to import the HD signals of Comcast SportsNet and DirecStudio feeds of local broadcast stations, replacing the over-the-air signal reception setup we have today, and to access a variety of bandwidth wholesalers to reduce operating costs. The total cost of the commercial data and voice services project is one million six hundred and nine thousand dollars. Staff arrived at this negotiated price after negotiating vigorously with Cisco over a five-month period to achieve a fifty-four percent discount over street pricing with additional assurance from Cisco that it is the best pricing the company can extend. Cisco has offered to finance this purchase through Cisco Capital at favorable terms, including a stepped-up payment plan over five years, giving the business enough time to ramp up sales. Staff will be returning with a recommendation of the financing of this purchase at the next city council meeting. The service itself will entail providing dedicated, high-capacity internet and point-to-point connections in IP-based phone service for business consumption. The service will be competitively priced in comparison to existing service providers. Staff anticipates that the pricing, the higher level of service, and the expanded features and functionality of IP-based services will attract many small- to medium-sized businesses. The commercial services are expected to generate six million dollars over the next six years, and net income of one point four million after settling lease obligations and contributions to, and contributions to the general fund of approximately one million dollars. In closing, the commercial services project will achieve a few key objectives. One, it will enable the city to offset any revenue loss from customers switching to alternative services. Two, it will enable the city to maintain its value pricing for its core video customers. Three, it will enable the city to extend its high-quality service and value pricing to San Bruno business community. The, it enhances the value of the cable system. If the business, if a situation ever arises that requires the sale of the cable system, this investment will not be in vain, because cable systems are valued based on technological advancements, the services that are offered, and the amount of operating cash that the business generates. From an economic development perspective, the availability of high-quality, value-priced commercial services will make San Bruno more attractive to technology companies, or any company for that matter, to looking to relocate. It enables the city to preserve general fund money, pay itself for the phone service, and earn additional revenue in the form of equity transfers from the cable operation. With that, staff recommends approval of the project, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions of staff?
Well, I said in the, you know, in the presentation that you gave me earlier last week, that I think that's, I think it's something that we have to do. And I've always questioned when, at what point when we're with San Bruno Cable going to get involved in the businesses and the commercial, commercial end of this community. Although it's, a lot of it's still over my head, I think just the concept of it and going into that, that whole nother realm that we're not, we haven't touched yet. And I think the, you know, Cisco, looking at the numbers and looking at how they're going to finance this, just, I just leaned over and you said, well, you're going to save almost two-hundred thousand dollars by, by fitting the city with a phone system. That's about how much, I'm looking, that's about how much the loan is.
For the first year?
Well, I mean, over, over the time, it's one point eight million.
That's correct.
Paying back to Cisco, and the loan's for one point six. So, I mean, that's simple math for me. So I think that's, I mean, that's a good investment. I'm, I'm all in favor of moving forward.
Mr. Medina.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. When I sat through the presentation as well, I had some concerns as far as the unexpected problems that we could or could not have happen, which we did as we experienced through the boxes. I was also concerned in regards to the current staffing level that we have at the cable, and whether this is going to impede the customer service level that I think we need to keep in order to keep our customers satisfied. I've been assured, and I'm sure I'll be reassured this evening, that it was minimal staff requirement because other things, it was being done by this company, and therefore, maybe at a manager level with Al or yourself, might be the only type unless there's something that happens to the system itself. The general fund saving its money for the new phone system, which I know the last time it was done was probably late nineteen ninety-something, late nineties, and just be able to save that as well as the monies that we currently pay to another provider was beneficial. Also, we have five years within this agreement, but of course, if there is an early payback, there is no penalty. You negotiated that within the contract as well. You know, so I think what was said at the last part of your presentation, which Al said in the meeting, which helped to convince me, was that the fact that this asset that the city has, to maintain its current value, and to ensure, if you do put it on the market, that it has the potential for retaining and gaining back for the citizens of this community to make this investment in the future technology to keep up with the competition so we can assure satisfaction for everyone.
Wow. There's not much to say after that. Vice Mayor Ruane and I have been on the cable subcommittee for a long time, and we've watched the cable system change and grow and morph into something that is truly exciting to see what the next step is going to be. There, there's an old saying, you know, you move or you lose, and we have to move, because otherwise, we're going to lose the customer base that we do have. So I'm all for it, and I think it's exciting. I think you've covered all the bases, all the negative things that can happen. There's always something, I think you, you and your staff have looked into minimizing anything like that. You've looked into the best way to go about this to lessen any impact it would have on our citizens. So I think it's a great thing to do.
Good. I must say, I totally agree. Of all these meetings, I know Irene and I totally understand every technical aspect of the cable.
Yes.
We might get our wires crossed a little bit, but, no, this is, this is great. You actually have to spend some money to make some money, and this is expanding out into where we might have, should have been, where we should have been a little while ago. So I look forward to it, and would someone like to introduce the resolution?
I would love to introduce the resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ruane?
Aye. Item D, adopt a resolution approving participation in a county-wide neighborhood stabilization program to acquire and rehabilitate vacant foreclosed properties for resale to qualified homebuyers, and allocating two hundred and eighty thousand dollars in matching funds from the below-market-rate-in-lu fee fund. Mr. Sullivan.
Good evening, honorable Vice Mayor, city council members. The federal government established the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, which is called NSP II, in response to the national foreclosure crisis and as part of the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. The San Mateo County Department of Housing has submitted an application to HUD for eight point nine million dollars in NSP II funds on behalf of local cities and nonprofit agencies. If the application is successful, NSP II funds would be used for the rehabilitation, for the acquisition rehabilitation and resale of one hundred and eight foreclosed homes in the county over a three-year period. This item is on an expedited track, because the entire NSP application process has had a very short timeframe. The NOFA came out at the beginning of May, and the application was due in the middle of July. San Bruno was not invited, was invited to participate at a late stage in the, in the application process, and staff first attended a meeting related to NSP II in early July. HUD has identified eleven census tracts in San Mateo County with relatively high foreclosure rates that would qualify to receive NSP II funds. One of those census tracts is located in San Bruno. It is also the location of the Shelter Creek condominium complex, which includes over twelve hundred condominium units. And staff has determined that the great majority of foreclosures within the census tract are in the Shelter Creek complex. If the application is successful, the county department of housing proposes to form a collaborative of cities and nonprofits to carry out the program, with the county as the lead agency. Currently, the collaborative partners include the county Habitat for Humanity, the cities of Daly City, East Palo Alto, South San Francisco, and Menlo Park, and the nonprofits Heart and Rebuilding Together. If San Bruno chooses to participate in the countywide effort, NSP II funds would be used to provide down payment assistance and rehabilitation assistance to qualified homebuyers for foreclosed condominiums at Shelter Creek. The county department of housing has expressed an interest in administering the NSP II program in San Bruno, based on their experience with the county's first-time homebuyer program and the county's rehabilitation program. The specific terms and guidelines for the program will be worked out when and if the county's application is successful. The various members of the collaborative will need to develop and agree to program guidelines, including how funds will be spent, loan and grant amounts and terms, and repayment arrangements. These guidelines would be specific to each participating jurisdiction. The guidelines and specific rules for use of funds will be presented to the city council for consideration prior to any expenditure of NSP II or city funds in San Bruno. San Bruno would benefit from participation in the program by gaining access to experience and resources that aren't available locally. The program represents an opportunity to create permanent affordable housing in San Bruno, and would help the city in meeting its affordable housing goals. The NSP II program requires a commitment of local matching funds. Staff recommends that the city commit two hundred and eighty thousand dollars to the program as San Bruno's match, which will leverage about an equal amount of NSP II funds. The county estimates that the average cost per property for rehabilitation and acquisition and resale to be about a hundred thousand dollars, potentially creating about five new affordable housing units in San, in San Bruno with long-term deed restrictions. The city has two sources of affordable housing funds. One is redevelopment low- and moderate-income housing funds, and the other is the BMR in-lu fee fund. Staff recommends using the in-lu fee funds, because unlike redevelopment funds, the BMR funds can be spent anywhere in the city, and the BMR fund is intended to assist the city in creating affordable housing without a significant financial impact. The BMR in-lu fee fund has a balance of about two point six million dollars, so there's, there is money available there. This would be the first affordable housing produced as a result of the city's BMR ordinance. Finally, I would like to emphasize that no city or NSP funds would be spent in San Bruno without the approval of the city council, and all funds committed by the city would be spent in San Bruno. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or action?
Through the chair. Is there a reason we're only doing two hundred and forty thousand, since we have that much money in, in-lu funds?
Yeah. The, the, there are five, well, I, about five participating jurisdictions that are contributing funds, and the two hundred thousand, two hundred and eighty thousand represents the sort of the gap in order for the county to, to get the maximum amount in, in NSP II funds. So if, by putting in any more, we don't really get any benefit from...
We don't, we don't match.
Adding, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or action?
So, two hundred and eighty thousand, up to two hundred and eighty thousand, and then we have a match of...
Yeah, it's, it would be, we, the match would be about two hundred and eighty thousand. It's a little complicated.
So about five, so about five properties?
Yes, about five hundred.
Yeah, no problems. Should use that money. I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember Ibera?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
And Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ruane?
Aye. Item F, adopt resolution approving a side letter agreement between the city of San Bruno and the Public Safety Mid-Management Bargaining Unit, extending their existing memorandum of understanding and authorizing their execution by the city manager.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. The memorandum of understanding between the city of San Bruno and the Public Safety Mid-Management Unit has expired. Representatives from both the city and the bargaining unit have met and negotiated and agreed upon a tentative agreement of a side letter extending the memorandum of understanding from July first of oh-nine through June thirtieth of two thousand and ten. The negotiations focused on the need for the city to address a serious revenue decline as a result of the global recession. In developing the two thousand nine, two thousand and ten budget, the city council recognized early on that the city could not make improvements to employee salary and benefits, and that it would need to implement an employee furlough or other means of reducing employee costs to balance the budget. The side letter, this side letter agreement includes a one point one-five salary reduction equal to three days of furlough. The scheduled furlough dates for those affected positions will not create overtime costs or affect the twenty-four-seven operations of the department. There are no increases to employee salaries, and a modest increase to the medical or premium effective October first of two thousand and nine. In addition, there will be no buyout of management leave for affected management positions. By the adoption of this side letter, it represents that five of the six bargaining units have settled agreements for this year. And the city manager would like to make a few comments.
Again, I just want to echo the human resources director comment that we are very close to reaching agreement now with five of the six bargaining units, are presenting to you the fifth of, of five out of six agreements. And again, recognizing the contribution that employees are making via these side letter agreements to resolving the city's serious budget deficit situation, and by understanding both the circumstances that the city finds itself in, and the need to continue services at the maximum level possible to our residents.
Any questions or action?
I was going to go ahead and, as Mayor Frenzila did at the last meeting, thank those for making this contribution toward trying to balance the budget during these challenging times, and introduce the resolution.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ruane?
Aye. Item number eleven, reports of commissions, boards, and committees, we have no reports tonight. Item twelve, comments from council members. I would just like to ask the city manager and finance director, or both, about the state's efforts to balance the budget and the impact it's having on our city, or may have on our city.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the city council. I guess the short way of saying this is that, finally, the state has approved a budget. Much more time went into the effort that has occurred at the state level. I would still say much less deliberative to actual strategic analysis of the dimension of the situation and the, and the need to address the situation on a long-term basis. Much less of that deliberate focus than this city and other cities up and down the state have recently devoted to their own budgets. But with that said, after weeks and months of discussion, and more recently, weeks of strategy development and betting those strategies occurring among the governor and the legislative leadership of the state's... leadership of the state's legislature, the state last week developed a budget that was finally and officially voted for approval by the State Assembly on Friday and signed by the governor today. That budget, as anticipated, includes serious additional taking from city revenues. And I emphasize that point carefully because I believe that the news media has broadly reported this, but I think it is absolutely essential that residents understand that these are not monies that are sitting around waiting for the state just simply to pick them up and deploy them. These are revenues that are owned by and necessary for their intended purposes at the local level. These are very deliberately and very directly city funds. I'm going to ask the finance director to give you a brief overview of what this budget intends in terms of taking city revenues. I would just like to make one more brief comment, and that is that it was, the situation that evolved with the budget that has now been signed was not as extreme as we feared. And most specifically, a provision for taking highway users tax, or what's typically known as gas tax revenues, in their full amounts for two years, that was a proposal that was up until the very, very last minute continuing to be in the budget, was removed on the basis of opposition from some of our legislators who heard from their constituents and from local elected and appointed officials up and down the state, including our local elected officials in Sacramento, heard directly from their constituents that that in particular was an untenable strategy and one that would irreparably damage local communities and the services that local cities provide. And it was at the urging and the specific action of legislators that that provision was removed. So, as much as we certainly hoped for a more advantageous outcome, and there will be many long months of continuing struggle, if you will, and potential challenge to this budget, at least we dodged one bullet, and that we're appreciative for that piece of good news. With that, I'm going to ask the finance director to briefly summarize the status of the budget as we know it at this time.
Vice Mayor, Members of the Council, the governor today did sign the state budget after cutting an additional $489 million from that what the legislature had approved last Friday. We know fairly well the impact of the state budget on local governments, although the legislature still is going to need to pass in the next several weeks a number of cleanup bills, so something adverse might come from that, but we anticipate that the budget assigned is relatively clear. As the city manager indicated, the outcome is not good for cities and redevelopment agencies, but again, without the actions, probably the League of California Cities, it could have been worse. The state had a $26.3 billion budget gap that they were dealing with, and the budget includes cuts of $8.8 billion for education, $2.2 billion for health and human services, and $1.2 billion reduction for corrections, parks, and other state agencies. A total of $3.4 billion is being taken from local governments, from cities, counties, and special districts. And again, somewhat repeating what the city manager said, that the state has no right to this money except for a small part of borrowing from Proposition 1A. The state doesn't even have a claim to this money. The nuns at St. Cyril's Elementary would call it stealing.
Tell us how you really feel.
As Willie Sutton, the Bandit, said when asked why he robs banks, he said, "Because that's where the money is." And what the state is really doing is taking this money from local governments because they can. So, the Mercury News had a depiction, an illustration, of a bridge bridging the budget gap, and they indicated of the $26 billion that the state needed to fill, about $13 billion of that came from legitimate cuts. There were $3.5 billion was accounting gimmicks, and about $13 billion was, what they said was new revenues, including this $3.4 billion from local governments. So, they're calling it new revenue. This illustration called it new revenue coming to the state. New revenue sort of implies ongoing revenue. Specifically for San Bruno, in borrowing property tax as provided in Proposition 1A, the taking from San Bruno amounts to $829,600. Proposition 1A allows 8% borrowing of property tax, but it actually bars the taking of sales tax and motor vehicle monies. 8% of the city's property tax really amounts to a little over $400,000. The State Department of Finance has calculated the borrowing by actually including sales tax and VLF money that they've transformed into property tax because of the triple flip. And I think at best you could say this is a very generous definition that benefits the state. The budget includes not a borrowing but a taking from our redevelopment agency of over $1.9 million this year, and that uses a formula using the tax increment money that the agency received in '06-'07, and the formula takes equal proportion, the net tax increment and the gross tax increment that the city received in that year. The agency had discussed several months ago the possibility of repaying the equipment reserve monies due as a strategy perhaps to protect this taking by the state. At the end of the day, for a couple of reasons, we didn't do that. This would have had no impact on the formula and the taking the state is doing, that there was really, I don't think, any way, any actions that could have been taken that would have protected that amount. Finally, you know, the good news, the savings on the gas tax, the latest figure that I had seen was about $726,000, which was about 90 or 95% of the total gas tax we would receive on an annual basis was what was in the sights of the state, and that, again, through the efforts of many people, that was not taken at this point. But again, that's on the radar for the state. And again, as the state looks for new revenue in the future, I'm sure we haven't heard the end of that. That is what I believe we know at this point regarding the state budget. I'd be glad to answer any questions the council has.
Through the chair. First of all, I think retirement's doing you well. That was a good presentation. Thank you. I was going to say, there was a conference call in that you could do this afternoon to listen to some of the governor's finance folks, which I called into, about 1,000-plus people in the state did, and they have a little different spin on it, of course. But interestingly enough, their prediction was that in the fourth quarter of this year, there might begin, in their mind, to see a turnaround. However, oddly enough, they wanted to remind everybody that the budget still is in dire strait, that as we entered the 2010-2011, that we will begin at the state level at a $7 to $8 billion deficit already. So, where we've made headway now, in their mind, again, we're still far off, and we are not out of it yet, and that's according to the governor's finance folks on a conference call after 3 o'clock this afternoon. So, there still is problems for the state, and this is just the start.
Any other comments? I think there's going to be some serious repercussions down the road with the state of California, the higher-ups. I mean, I was always of the understanding, when you borrowed money, it came from entities that could lend money, like banks or savings and loans or whatever, and cities don't have it. It's a real unfortunate situation because they're just not doing their job. Closed session. We will be going into closed session after this adjournment. I don't believe there's going to be reportable action tonight. No, okay. Prior to adjournment tonight, I do have some very sad news. We lost recently one of our members, one of the members of our city family. Dennis Chely, a cable technician with San Bruno Cable Department, passed away on July 14th. Dennis served the City of San Bruno as a valuable member of the cable department's team for 14 years. He embraced new technology. He assumed his duties with enthusiasm and dedication. He made significant contributions in the development of the cable headend, which is the heart of the cable operation, and was the go-to person for all the cable headend-related issues. He demonstrated care and concern for his fellow employees and the customers he served. Dennis always carried a big smile, a smile as big as himself, and was well-liked by those who knew him. His loss leaves a big hole in our cable operation, in fact, our city family, but mostly in our hearts. He will be sorely missed. I ask you to say a special prayer for Dennis tonight and his young family, and I would like a moment of silence in his memory, please. Thank you, and this meeting is adjourned until the next regular city council meeting on August 25, 7 p.m. here at the Senior Center.